Greetings to everyone. Tonight is a special session of your Unified Government Commission. Today is May 2, 2024. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that we have individuals attending remotely, as well as onsite. All participants joining by phone should please mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak. So the public that is participating knows exactly who is speaking. This is critical given the number of remote participants and current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's office. Please make sure you speak clearly and at an audible level into the microphone to ensure your comments are heard and an accurate record can be made. I'll now call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to announce the meeting and roll them.
Good evening. You're hereby notified that a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, is to be conducted in a hybrid format on Thursday, May 2, 2024, at 4:00 PM, for a presentation from the county administrator. Immediately following will be an executive session in the fifth floor conference room, 701 North 7th, Kansas City, Kansas regarding personnel. Roll call. Payne?
Here.
Bites?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Finum? Burrows?
Here.
Pounson? We have an absence memo. Burns?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Garner?
Here. Thank you, clerk. This evening, we're gonna have a presentation from our county administrator, David Johnston. I asked him to prepare an overview, strategic plan, or just an update. He's been here for a year, and I thought it would be good for him to present his vision now that he's gotten, he's moved past the honeymoon stage and gotten his feet wet and has kind of got an assessment of the organization and the personnel, as well as our community, and to just share with you his thoughts as far as his plans and he'll entertain any input as well. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. As the mayor said, I've been here just over a year, and it was, I said to you once before, David, you've been asked many times, are there any surprises? And I said, well, the recruiting brochure said there'd be some challenges. They said maybe there are some financial challenges and there are some personnel challenges. Now, once you sit in the chair, you finally realize going, what the heck did I get myself into? But it's, it's good work that needs to be done here at the, at the UG and working for our citizens. And so I appreciate the opportunity to provide, one, an overview of the year that has happened, things we're going to be working on this year. And then we're going to end with some real challenges that I think we all need to work on. We all need to work to address and to keep our community viable, vital, and a great place to invest, work, live, and play. So on the first, first, on the overview, just give you some, we have had some strategic hires. You know, we hired our chief financial officer, our fire chief, our public health director, and our transit director. We are, I am finding it difficult to find an economic development professional. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But we're still plotting forward, trying to fill key slots. One position that's not up there, we have hired a person to serve as my executive assistant, but part of the new role that that plays, not only does it serve me, but it serves as the, the old commission liaison position. Because I believe that position was founded years ago to make sure that there's good communication between the commission side of the building and our side of the building. So he'll have that Rodney Lucas. We'll start on May 20, and we'll make sure we get the rounds to all of you. He's currently, he just finished serving as a city manager in Florida community and wants to come home, live, to deal with his aging parents. So we're happy to have his talents. We also, this may sound redundant to you, but we just initiated a new independent review using GovHR, which you're familiar with, that you used to hire this position that I hold. But they also just recently merged in the, around the holidays with a very well-respected management consulting group called NGT. And they, I've asked them to come and take another independent look at the HR function. I know there was an audit done under Cheryl. We've had a review of the fire department, which had some critical comments about the HR department. So that all started under Cheryl. And now that I've been here a year, I have heard complaints continually after the audits, concerns by some of our staff members and some from you. And so I thought it was best to really bring in another auditor, which kind of has a different approach. They're not here to solely identify weaknesses in the organization. They're here to do two things, and it was part of their marketing and interview that really had them rise to the top. It says, you know, we're here to help departments celebrate what they're doing well and reinforce that success. But we all know organizations have challenges, and we're going to be, through our investigation, unearthing those and presenting them for opportunities of improvement with no negative connotation. Here's what's before you. What steps can you take? What can we work together to set up strategies so these can go on the plus column? So I know there's audit fatigue with that department, but with this last, hopefully, objective audit, we can get them on improvement schedules wherever they're needed to be. Because that's, that's one of our key shared systems for internal departments that serve all departments, and we need to have good working relationships with all of them. Next is budget and finance. As you know, this was a baptism by fire for me. I get hired, Dave, you gotta start the budget process. It is, by the way, about two months late. And so we had to catch up fast. To help us with budget and finance issues, you just recently met as a group with Resource X representative. But we're bringing in the first-of-its-kind new product where in 2017, we bought the software and it was supposed to be a self-directed approach, which didn't go anywhere. This new model has a retired public CFO that will guide our efforts to take critical look at how we're doing. Because the goal, I think we all understand, we're going to have to make some changes. It's to give us the context in which to have good discussion and the rational approach to make changes and, and cuts. So that's what priority-based budgeting, it provides us with the information necessary to have good discussion and then the opportunity for readjustments or cuts. You all know that last year's final budget that was approved by you pushed out the danger zone that was identified in our five-year budget model by several years. We focused on the revenue side of the budget while being a good steward on the expense side at the same time. I think we all were a little surprised at how reliant we have been on, on, on debt, where 44% of the property tax levy for the city side goes to pay for debt. And my training said it should probably never, the thumbnail accepted level is 20%. So we are exceeding that. And then when you saw in the, when we had the audit report, Debbie presented our level of debt for a double A rated bond agency. And we're right there, and they said, if you want to get an improved bond rating, you're going to have to go before, below a certain threshold. If you go above a certain threshold, you'll get a worse rating. So we finally have good barometers on how we look at debt because part of the tax bill, a citizen pays, pays for general obligation debt. And so we, we needed to have that picture before you last year, and I think we did an effective job on that. That's the increased awareness on our reliance on debt. We introduced the use of that five-year budget model that kind of sat dormant in the, in our budgeting department. And we use that, and I think that painted the picture of why we needed to take notice of our financial situation that led to certain decisions last year to push out our concerning years. Negotiated with the state of Kansas and Cerner folks to include budget or local public benefits is part of their settlement on the Cerner buildings. And then finance and budgeting is working very closely with the departments on a critical look on their budgets. That was a direct request by you folks to us. So we're taking it seriously. On public safety was an area that is concerned. You see the best side of me, the backside on that picture. But we all should be proud of the community policing efforts and the local awareness programs of our, our police department that their hard work now has achieved the lowest homicide rate in KCK in 20 years, and it's getting noticed. They are working aggressively with federal and regional drug task force and trafficking task force. And we're recognized on our efforts on fentanyl. It seems like because of our location of our, of our county, our city, we're right in the middle of the country. And so it's a great distribution point to go east, west, north, south to distribute that evil drug to people. Seems like every couple of weeks, we hear from the police department that they'll pull a traffic stop over and somebody has in their trunk a nice supply of fentanyl, and they're proud to take them, take it out of the supply chain. So their work is, is being lauded nationally, and we're proud to have that work recognized. We're looking at, with, with Chief Oakman, to continue to improve community policing, getting our police officers out of the car and mingling with the businessmen and women with the customers in the neighborhoods helps provide a better relationship with that group, with our police department. But it also gets them to know the lay of the land when they have to respond to a call and notice things that may be out of the ordinary. It makes them more aware in their responsibilities. You experienced the dedication and opening of our new Fire Station 16 that merged two smaller, older stations. That's quite a facility. And they'll be looking for the next station, which I believe is numbered Fire Station 20, which is, I think, a similar merger. If not, it's just replacing our older stations. On that, you're going to be hearing later, sometime in the next couple of months, the, the fire department's master plan, which is, was part of a unique clause in the last collective bargaining agreement where management and the union would come together and talk about facilities and the direction of the fire department, which they did, and they're ready to report out on that. So that's going to be interesting. And then you know about the new CSI building that has started last fall. In Public Works, we have, with the CSI building, we have the new wastewater office building that started in the same area. You've heard good, bad, indifferent, a new approach to stormwater management and funding. That's been years in the making and a couple, I think it started, this is, you are the third commission where a watershed approach to stormwater is advocated with its funding stream. And then we think what I've noticed in the one year, people forget about what a consent decree, what goes on into managing something, an infrastructure that is primarily underground, out of sight, out of mind. And it showed that we need to step our public awareness on stormwater maintenance and the consent decree. Because people just take it for granted, rains, water's gotta go somewhere. And we have to follow EPA rules and then rules with Kansas environmental health. And, you know, these are things that Joe and Sally Citizen aren't aware of, but we have to follow these laws. And, and unfortunately, with the consent decree, we have a significant amount of the older part of our community having combined sewer that in bad rain events, you know, it's a compartmentalized sewer where one side is wastewater and one side is stormwater. When you get a rain event, it encompasses the whole and mixes the sewage with the, with the rainwater. And we can't have raw sewage dumping into the river. So that's why we negotiated years ago a consent decree with EPA that we have to follow. Under your direction, we are seeking funding to replace Kansas and Central Avenue bridges. We are, just be honest with you, we're having problems with Kansas City, Missouri, getting their support on this joint grant. Where we started down this road probably two years ago, we had their support, and we just don't think it's as in priority for them as it is for us. Central Avenue, back in 2017, when we had to close that bridge, and you looked at the data with the average traffic counts, it was low. And you could see that it wouldn't probably meet the threshold to make it a priority. If you followed what is happening down at the bottoms with the redevelopments, the warehouse district has a developer that's supposedly going to be pumping in $500 million to take those old warehouses and make them living and living quarters, apartments, office buildings. Some may be torn down and new built, but there's a new attention to the bottoms. As, as, and everybody's thinking it's going to be the next, and I'll date myself, hit place to live. And so with that development that's going to occur there, the Central Avenue Bridge is our gateway to, to the bottom. So we're working closely with Representative Davis to make sure that we apply to the right grant through the state. It's always, these two bridges are always in our conversations when we talk to our federal and state elected delegations. And they're always trying to help, help us meet the needs of our community on this. And this last one is looking at alternative financing options to meet deferred maintenance on UG streets. I believe it was the 22-sitting commission that kind of committed that we'll give you 25% more infrastructure money for roads annually. That would be coming out of, when you looked at our financial model, out of our general fund. And when you looked at our financial situations to our budgeting processes, it's very difficult to meet that goal. There are other options like using a strategic use of debt and using our annual, parts of our annual street money from the gas tax, shared revenue from the state to fund it. So we're not using general fund money, but what bonding does, it provides kind of like a present value amount of cash where we can attack some of those higher, you know, we rank our street issues, streets with, with, which is worst to best, and we can really kind of maybe create an influx of cash on the front end and really say to the public, we took care of the seven worst and have an actual deliverable to show their tax dollar in action. At the same time, making sure that we have street preservation still every year to deal with, with our needs. But if we're serious about taking care of our deferred maintenance, we need to look at different ways to get capital using our existing revenue streams. And that's just one that we're, we're looking at. On economic development, even though we don't have a director, things have occurred. As you know, we are active participants with the KC 26 World Cup Committee. I'm one of the board directors. They finally have organized themselves, have the Articles of Incorporation, satisfied their agreements with Kansas City, Missouri, who is the actual recipient of the designation for the World Cup. So the torch has been passed to the, to the committee just in the last month, and they're fitting their, they're hiring the necessary staff to get going. What's nice, I think we all understand, we feel we're a little late to the game. This thing is around 750 days from now, something like that. We're thinking we're behind. And when we talked with other of the 11 cities in, in the country hosting World Cup, we find out that we're middle of the road, which made us feel a lot better. But they're working hard to hire the necessary folks to organize this thing. I'm co-chair. One of the wonderful distinctions of having a mayor that hires you, he gets to name you to certain co-chairs. And this is the World Cup readiness task force. Alan Carr from our Visit KC K office is the chair. And the local committees have the responsibility of making the experience a good experience for the visitors who are going to be coming to see the matches. We are told that, from the FIFA folks, that, you know, let's say we get two teams here. Probably one of the top ones and one of the middle-of-the-road ones. The top team, their fans will leave the country for 45 days and come to where that team is assigned. So at least 40,000 people will call the region home. Now, why does it mean it's more important for us to be ready? We have soccer facilities that are going to be used by the teams. We have the Sporting KC Mercy Park, and we have Compass Point Training Facility, all on the west side. It's looking like that's going to be chosen as the training site for the teams assigned here. And Margaritaville is negotiating very hard to be labeled as the headquarters hotel for at least one team here. So that means we're going to have to entertain, get people around. So like wayfinding is going to be important that we, to a level that we're not used to. Where I have to deal with foreign language that we're not used to very openly on signs and, and material. We have to organize the business community to make sure that they will be able to respond and maybe organize themselves. You know, we're the home to the Taco Trail. What do we do to make that a reality in a convenient spot for the visitors to, to enjoy? We're renovating the hall next door to us here to serve hopefully as a major viewing center inside the building. But we can quarter off from Ann Street to the street on the other side of the hall and have this be a mini Fan Fest area if we so choose. And that's going to be some of the issues that are going to be talked about and directed by the readiness committee and let you know if Alan has proposed and the board has accepted his plan of a staffing model, a volunteer model, you want to get involved. There's about, oh, at least 10 areas that you could share your talents and abilities to help make the local experience very nice to our visitors. So we can get you that information. Actually, I think we were supposed to put it on the website, but we'll have to make sure we do that. We talked about with you that one of the things that we need improvement on are our processes, whether it's a permit review, whether it's other applications. We've contracted with City Works, and one of their programs is to make sure that your processes are not barriers to business development. And so they're taking a critical look at any department that has a permit and what's the review process, what's the time it takes to get through? And if there are some onerous requirements, what can we do to reduce that? So they're working now for us to, to do that. We talked about a deep dive in the development project process improvements. One of those things, because of the complaints that we've received over the last year, we've had to really take a hard look at our development review committee and what are the roles that each department that services those. And one of the things that we found out that it was kind of viewed as a democratic process on whether a TCO would be issued to a business. And we actually found that we weren't following our own ordinances. And therefore, once that got directed, we found that the chief building official, who's Jim Neath in our community, is supposed to be the chair of that. And therefore, looked him straight in the eye and said, Jim, we're following the ordinances. You're the chief. You have judgment. That you can use the committee, the other departments as resources. But if a business is ready to open and meeting health, safety, and welfare issues, you can issue a TCO if you so choose and judge. I told him that, and he looked me straight in the eye and said, David, I've been waiting for someone for 12 years to tell me I can do my job. Isn't that sad? So we've allowed things to happen, whether it's for convenience, whether it's something that could have gotten lost in the shovel because of the COVID emergency, or we scrambled because of the effect on our government of the recession at the late part of the first decade, whatever, just bad habits were allowed to take place. And what's supposed to be our guide, the policies and ordinances passed by this body? And sometimes our departments did their own thing. So we're having a re-engagement of what do our ordinance say? This is what you're supposed to do, not what you want to do. So we're having a re-engagement of what do our ordinance say? This is what you're supposed to do, not what you want to do. What you're supposed to do. And if there are, in your opinion, professional opinion. Voids, bring them up for discussion. Commission's always welcoming to take a look. At those changes and whether to give a thumbs up, a thumbs down, that's their job. And so we're starting to bring that up now. We also had issues with home fields because of this. One of the changes we made with that on large developments. Our committee, review committee will now meet, started as a, as a weekly basis, now every two weeks. So there's better communication from the developer. With our staff and we can iron things out more quickly than we have had in the past. Instead of waiting, we're engaging. And I think that's one of the things that you're, you're seeing a change here. Purchasing, there's been an ask to bring back the MBE WBE standards. Sharon just told me today that the. Contract to do whatever assessments needed to do that is going to be sent to legal. Probably early next week and we can get those established through the legal message. We let them expire. And to get them back active, we have to go through this process. So Sharon's taking that initiative and we'll get those reinstated. Yes. I'm sorry.
Well, initially, we'll wait till the end.
Okay. Okay. We've been working on and off staff and myself directly with Kansas University Health Systems on their long-range vision. I think they've, do have an appreciation that they have to balance. Their business needs with the fact that they're located smack dab in a neighborhood. That was probably fine when they founded themselves a hundred years ago. But it's, it's part of a community and, and they now understand they have to be sensitive. But also they need to engage in the community so they can be sensitive to keep this major economic driver viable in our community. We just have to understand that. The KU Health Systems just bought two. Hospitals, one in Olathe and one in Missouri. They're fighting some regulations in Missouri, but the Olathe Campus has land. And if they, if, if, if we don't continue to foster a good working environment with them, they have choice. We'd like the choice to stay here and grow. So that means we have to talk with them, right? And that's what we're, we're doing now these days. We did do the Plan KC K Comprehensive Plan Update that was adopted by you, I believe in December of last year. That has opened up a lot of discussion, even after the discussion that many. Long process that culminated with that is that some of those standards, I think we need to think about. Is our community ready for implementation today? It may be ready in ten years, but we need to take a value look at some of the things that we pass. Finally, the, you, you noticed the fourth in Minnesota developer. Was selected and you saw their rendition and the articles in the paper. So that's moving forward. And the, just found out today, Bridgette, that the, the review for Indian Springs is completed. We're just tabulating the results now. So you'll be hearing about that status very shortly. Openings, Rock Island Bridge, I think you were all invited just a couple of weeks ago to a beautiful day on the bridge. And saw its transformation. It still has some work to do, but they intend to open up in mid-June. Once the levy is completed in that area. We'll go ahead and work fast and furious on the west parking lot, which is our responsibility. We need to get the Corps of Engineers out of there so we can do the necessary surveying. And design, final design work to get the plans to the contractor who's going to do the work. You've been to the Home Field Training Center opening and the ball fields, places packed particularly on weekends. It's a beautiful facility. And we look forward to many years of many events over there. And then a couple of you were at the Orange EV. Opening, I don't know how many of you are aware of what Orange EV is. It's a manufacturer of electric semi trucks. And they, they, they usually, you find them at ports, airports, river ports, seaports. Because they, they, they do the long haul, moving from one section of the port to another section of the port. And firms like DHL, who has, have an exclusive contract with them, wherever they have an air carrier. Port, they're there mover within the airport. It's an envi, it's all because of the environmental ethos of the owners of EV. If they can reduce diesel fumes. By having an electric vehicle being able to haul. Heavy, heavy loads for short periods of time. They're doing it and they're finding a market with the port industry, which is exciting. And they're made right here. And then groundbreaking, you know, the Community College Downtown Campus is happening. Marvin Windows, some of you were at their big opening at. I can't remember the, but it's right by Lake Wilderness Park. They held a nice reception to formalize their ground opening. American Royal has broke ground and moving forward. Yards Two and other multifamily projects have started over the year. And Yards Three is going to be before us sometime this year. To get started next year and they hope to have that. It's going to probably be a slightly bigger than Yards Two. A little more dense, but Flannery and, and Connor. Developer put out a good product. So we're glad to see them. Get that going. Of course, that's right next to the Rock Island Bridge. Communications, I think you've seen a dramatic improvement in communications with our strategic communication staff. You've seen just, I think, the second episode of U G Stat. Which is going to be a regular feature to you and to the community on updating what's going on within each department. Right now, we started by providing you a lot of data. I think we're going to mix it up with some more human interest. Writing instead of charts, bars. It's, we, we need to humanize it a little bit. And so it's an evolution. But we promised you last year that we wouldn't give you better communication of what's going on. Within all our departments, and this is what staff and I came up with. We are hosting all staff meetings to establish expectations. That started in January. And we also started meeting with all our directors. To talk about our mission statement. What type of goals as an organization should we have? And how do we work together to achieve those? It's been a while since before the COVID that they had anything like this. So it's been long overdue to dust it off and get it going. One of the things that we're talking about, and I think this is something that's important for all of us. As an organization. The organization has been. Had to deal with change. And it fast changed. We had to adapt to the COVID crisis. We had to adapt to new election results with a new mayor elected and with. His expectations, visions and things like that. That may be different than what was the status quo. And so there. I focused the first meeting on this is. We need to understand something. We are in a dynamic environment. And therefore I have to echo my favorite bumper sticker. I can't use the word, but you'll understand what I'm saying is. We need a bumper sticker that says change happens. It happens. And you have to deal with it. And whether you like the change or not, we also threw the Serenity Prayer up there. You know, the, the. Which is to accept the change, things you cannot change, courage to change the things that you can, the wisdom know the difference. Well, that's needs to be kind of like our attitude, working for any organization. Because change will happen and discombobulate the status quo. So we need to talk about that. The same thing is within our community. And so we need to understand that for us to continue to be viable and vital in the future. We need to work with our community, our citizens, that change is going to happen. How do we get it to be accepted? And I'll put that term in quotes. So that's, we're working on that internally and we're going to have to deal with that externally as well. Operations, this is the big celebration on that. And that is, the workday was completed, I think, what, December? And so we go to, we go in solely to that as our system. Parks, opened a pickleball court to acclaim out at Lake Windup Park. There's a demand to do more throughout the community. They remodeled, reopened Bethany Community Center. Working with the Piper School District as we speak on a partnership to create a new public park out there. On the west side in the Piper area. This has been, the, the next one was a really an important one at the end of our budget process last year. The rock wall that collapsed at Lake Windup Park. It's being fixed this year. So you'll have that finished this year and get that off our checklist. And, and then. Angel is taking a look, hard look at the role of our community centers play within the community. Against our, the UG ability to support certain levels of service of those. So we're looking at, at that. Again, change occurs, resource limitations. Those are all things we have to be aware of and make adaptations as needed. Health and Human Services, with the help of Commissioner Bynum, we achieved, we achieved. The, the Community for All Ages designation, a bronze status for that. Which is something that we met certain standards for all ages. And it's quite an honor to be recognized that way. Working on relocate, finding a place to relocate Willigil and all the services that are provided there. And we opened a satellite health clinic in Bonner Springs, which. Was welcome to the citizens of Bonner Springs. That's what community health, our, our, our communications department did to announce the opening. Now we're. Talking about. Looking forward. The. Uphold fiscal sustainability. What I think we presented last year showed that we can't get away from this and actually. We're hearing from some citizens that it's a priority for them. So. We are supporting a Resource X and Priority X budgeting process, as I talked about earlier. We, since we now have our full-time CFO. We can pay attention and develop a, a debt management policy and strategy for, for your approval. We're looking at tax relief strategies. We kind of started that discussion at the end of last year's budget process. Revenue neutral, non-revenue neutral, BPU relief, non-BPU relief, all that. And then this is one that you can't get away from is that, how do we adapt as an organization, as a community with our stakeholders and within our government? To a post ARPA world where we had significant amount of free money. From the federal government to do things to get us through that crisis. Well, the crisis is no longer and there's no new money. And we have had interesting dynamics in the last year. Dealing with, with departments who are saying, well, David, you're going to keep the ARPA programs going through general. I said, no. It was a one-time pot of money. And therefore, we're going to have to get back to a pre-ARPA. Environment. Then finally, we have foster economic development. Here's some things that we're going to be working on in the next year. In that small book that I gave all of you on, on local economic development is still an issue. If I didn't get to that, I can get you a book upstairs. But they say, if you don't have a product, you're not going to have a project. And the challenge to the community, are you ready to participate in economic development? It just doesn't happen. And, and therefore, we need to define our community. And what type of businesses do we want here? Right now, our approach is we wait for them to come to us and we take what we get. In communities where we've been successful, when I worked in Maple Valley, Washington, Westfield, Indiana, and in even Rancho, Illinois, dealing with a closed Air Force base. We outlined what we wanted and we went to the conferences, we went to the. Site selector folks and said, this is what we're looking for. Here's our demographic profile, the market analysis that we paid for. If this, if you need more, let us know, we'll get it to you. Otherwise, they're going to do it. So we're doing them the one, three, five mile radius information for market. And then we're also identifying what sectors do you want here? You know, there's probably about twenty employment sectors that you can't. It's not appropriate to have all of them here. Which ones do you want? And you say, okay, the top four, we're going to focus our energies and go after them. The other thing is, we are one of the largest users of Star Bonds here. And when we, we need to maybe take a different approach when we entertain a Star Bond project. Is we look at this, the, the, the project, but also the land within the district. And say, are we going to work with the developer and make sure? That we have adequate sales tax generating businesses locating in and around. That it's going to generate the cash. So we don't have a prairie fire default. We don't want to have a prairie fire default. And therefore, I think we have some responsibility. Even though whether or not the bonds get paid off. And the risk is all on the bond buyer, not us or the developer. But we also don't, we have a reputation. We're issuing these bonds in our name. We want them to succeed. And therefore, we have a certain responsibility to work and say, we need sales tax generating businesses within the bond district. So the bonds can get paid off. So I think that's something we've not done in the past. We need to start doing that in the future. Talked about marketing to employment sectors. We need to pick that out. Continue relationship with the Department of Commerce. They are so key for our partnerships of what we've done in the past. Leverage Star Bonds effectively. That's making sure that we can have good drivers to pay off the bonds. Foster an understanding of economic development within all UG departments. You're going to have a permit process that affects a business. Make sure it's a good customer service experience. There's ways to say no that can help lead to a yes. And we need to have that type of attitude inculcated within our department. We have forty-six hundred land bank parcels that we own. I was going to bring you down that map that I've showed most of you about the northeast. And what we own there. If you haven't seen it, I can show it to you. But there's reasons why we can't get a grocery store, any other commercial activity that the public up there want. You don't have people living there. There is no market forces to draw private investment in. And we own most of those lots. What are we going to do to change that? The spirit of the law of the Star Bond law is. To get the local government possession. And do what it can to reactivate it as quickly as possible to make it a productive taxpaying entity. We need to have that philosophy. You have the land bank policy update coming to you very soon. When you take a look at that and have good discussion, it's that spirit we need to have. The other thing that we got to be careful about is that we don't want to. Give significant amount of land bank. To another entity that turns into a land bank. If we transfer the property, we need to know their schedule and hold them to it to redevelop that area. That's that spirit of land bank. And so. For the Northeast, if we could package a significant amount, maybe two or three. Sections of that land bank inventory. To a developer and have a contract with a performance-based. Expectations. We can reinvent and make that Cundarrow Boulevard and again, a, a commercial. Corridor to support the rooftops. Right now, there are no rooftops. In concentration to attract investment. I know that's a hard thing for people to think about, but it is reality. We are talking about focusing on with the Cundarrow Task Force that. The mayor and you approve through ordinance. Developing the, the river fronts from Cundarrow. All the way over to the Rock Island Bridge and let the water be a major attraction for investment. And then, as I said, redevelop fourth and Minnesota and redevelop and get them going. As long as we own it, no taxes are being paid on it. No employment is being offered by any of our. To our citizens is just sitting there. We need to activate the property that we own. With good projects that will provide jobs and taxes. On communication and service, which has been a priority of yours. You've seen strategic communications participate better with the wider media and they've developed relationships with. All the radio news station and, and TV stations and the, and the print media. They've, we are encouraging the use of. Our departments of their services, particularly since they have the news networks. That, that most departments don't have. We want to work closely with our clerk on departmental processes and improvements. And I know that's a desire of the mayor and a few of your commissioners. And so we'll be working on that. Sooner than later. We do need to develop an overall better attitude of service. With all the publics have served within all our departments. We can't just say that's the way it's been done every year. We need to look at outbase. What's the experience of the person standing in front of us? And the same thing, we need to get back to this fundamental, we're a public agency. We need to get an appreciation of what it means to be publicly accountable. And that's not. I haven't found that to be a deep-seated value within our organization. And we need to get that back up to the top like cream. And then again, continue the evolution of U G Stat as a major communication tool. And then finally improve infrastructure. We're talking about applying for the grants necessary to replace the two bridges. Develop a public education strategy to support. Our public, our stormwater capital improvement program. And what I mean by that, public needs to understand the complexity. Of what it takes to meet. The laws that we must follow as a government to provide that service. Yet it's is not a cheap. Endeavor. So it's part of that public accountability. This is why we're doing it. This is how we're going to use our project money to help meet the goals and the, and the consent decrees and all that. To, to do it. We need to do a better job explaining ourselves to the public. Now we also are land, are building owners. We have an aging stock. And therefore I know that John Kelly and his crew. Has gone through a necessary investigation of the status of all our public buildings. But they're competing for the same cash to keep those buildings viable. And so they need to keep that in front of us. Both current and future needs. We still have, we're going to be dealing with the trash cart assessment with you very soon. Better accountability on project management. We find out that not necessarily all public capital projects have a formal closeout. We do need to have better closeout and if there's money left over. It goes back into the pot for either reprogramming or reducing debt. And then take a hard look at underutilized park inventory, what I'm told, talking with Angel. We have a number of. Very small parks that we maintain. And there might be a viable larger park a block away. Therefore, how do we? Reduce our maintenance. Expenses by disposing of those. That inventory of those smaller ones. And then finally. Issues that I think we, that are, that. Need to be addressed by not just our staff, not by me, but. Just me, but also all of us, including the eleven electeds that are around this table. We're dealing with issues, challenges. Of recruiting people. One of the things. That we're hearing from all the public safety agencies, I'm just finding out. It's an issue with our public health. Department now too, and hiring necessary professionals is the residency requirement. So. Hopefully we can take a, have a hard discussion. With you, whatever decision comes up, we still feel duty bound to bring it up. That it's a tough thing to, the candidates are saying. I, if I'm thirty-five, forty, I want the urban lifestyle Casey Mo offers, you don't have it. We also have found that we do have a housing shortage. We've had kind of last couple of months, some strong discussions about certain types of housing. We're going to continue to have that as a community. So we just need to know we have to, we can be able to serve. And attract the best quality candidates to us. And, and not be our own worst enemy. So I'm just throwing it out there. When you look at our workforce. We are going to have a silver tsunami. We have a number of twenty-five, thirty-plus year employees. That have significant institutional knowledge. And we're going to have to replace them. With good people. Again, I'm going to go up to number one, if I'm having issues of recruiting them. It's going to be tough when they decide to pull the trigger on retirement. How can we get good people to replace them? Or hire people to grow them into the position. So that's something to keep in there. Other people have talked to me about this. I'm sure you've been talked about that. We have an image problem in our community. Some of it's driven by. Customer experience with our departments. As I've told you, when I'm having issues of recruiting an economic development director, they do. Their research on YouTube and watch our meetings. And they make the decision, they don't want to be part of that volatile environment. So that's not my. Area to improve. That's an issue for you eleven. To, to deal with, understanding that. Our meetings are taped. And. You're part of the image of our community. And you could help us if, 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 if you, you think about that a little bit. The other ones is, you know. We are running our government on a year-to-year basis. We have very few long-term goals for all the departments to achieve. And that sets our roadblock and that actually can commit our budget for many years. But we do things without knowing, is it really going to make a change in our community? We don't have that mindset. And so. I think we all have this. Issue, we're going to be doing that within each department. And eventually we're going to have it come to you, but we also need to have the top-down. Feeling and we're going to have to have probably some retreats or something. Where all of you get together to talk about. The vision of the community. And set paths and goals. So we can articulate them to our departments. To our grantees that we work with. And say, tell us how you're going to meet, help us meet these goals. And so we get more toward a performance-based part of government. So we can say. We can actually say, this is how your public dollar is contributing to a better community. One of the things that the mayor keeps. Growing at me, David, we do have to make changes in our government. You need to exhibit administrative courage. I believe that was the term that you used. And we're, some of the stuff that we're going to be doing isn't going to make everybody happy. But our goal is got to continue to provide good services to the public. How we do that? With resources that we have available. May need new ways of thinking, new experiments in trying to do things. That means we have to be open to change. And the way we did things in twenty-ten. Twenty-twenty. May not be the best way to do things in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five or in the future. And therefore this concept of change is not going to go away. We're all going to be part of that in one way or the other. And so that's, I think, a good message to end on my, on my update.
Thank you, Administrator. Appreciate that, that update to the commission. Commissioner King, I believe you had a question or comment? I'm sorry, Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a quick one going back to the. The, the economic development. Portion where you talked about the M W E benchmarks, were we not already? Putting those in contracts? Are you referring to U G contracts? Cause I know there was in the code, there's a supplier opportunity section that was sunsetted.
The code, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, but the code sunsetted. And every so often you have to go through an assessment. To see what are the needs of the area today. And so they sunsetted, we need to reestablish those. We started down the road to do a joint. Process with Casey Mo. But they had some management changes and they decided to go on their own and let, didn't tell us. Minor detail. Okay. And so now we have to, if that was something that we felt was very important. That's what we heard from you. That this is very important to resurrect and do it. So there is a legal process that we have to go through. To establish those, those standards. Now. It doesn't mean we can't put suggestions in our contracts. Or our, our RFPs. Which we do. But there don't have the oomph that an ordinance gives us. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's, that was it.
Okay, that's, that's what I figured it was because I, I remember. Four years ago when I started, I read that part of the code and that. Thing COVID happened and so that just fell off my radar. I remember reading that code and kind of. Shocked myself that we allowed that, the, to sunset.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor and Administrator Johnston. I really appreciate the. Update. I think it's. It's good and thorough and I think it has some challenges for us and. And I appreciate that. I am wondering. If in addition to all this great information, could we? I don't mean to put Clerk Sparks on the spot, but I'll bet she knows some stuff off the top of her head. With regard to our recent rebate season. Because I think that it was pretty successful and I'd kind of like to hear about it. And before I ask for that, or you ask for that, I would just want to, Mayor and Administrator, reiterate. The request for the strategic planning sessions. As they relate to the strategy and goals that you're hoping we can outline. So. But I would love it if she could share the results of our. Efforts this winter. If you are able.
Do have the information. We had one thousand three hundred and forty-five applications. It is the most that we have ever seen. Which is very successful. We were able to process rebate, U G rebates, which is our utility sales tax. Of four hundred and sixty-four thousand thirty-four dollars. Property tax rebate, which of course comes from the state. Of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand six dollars. For a total. Of eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
And I think, and I think when we were talking about this program, what we were normally doing. On the, on the thing that is around four hundred plus thousand dollars, it was a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And I think we need to commend the Clerk's office. Cause this year they took the show on the road. As opposed to waiting them come to her. And her staff. So they went out to the community centers, to the neighborhoods. And educated people that. If you qualify, come sit down, fill out an application. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Administrator, and thank you for answering those questions. That concludes. Presentation. At this time, the commission will. Proceed to go into executive session regarding a personnel matter. We have a motion.
I moved.
Yes, we have a motion to go into personnel matters. I move the commission to reconvene. Into executive session beginning at six, twelve. Six, twelve. Until seven. I'm sorry, five, twelve, thank you, until six, twelve P M to allow the commission to further discuss the job performance. Of the county administrator, which is a private personnel matter related to a specific non-elected employee. Permit by the Kansas Open Meetings Act and that staff are requested by the commission be present. And that it is no further business that we return to open session at six, twelve. Second.
I think we have a second from Commissioner Ramirez. Okay, Clerk roll call.
Roll call. Kane?
Aye.
Lopez?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go into an executive session. Commission, this will be a working. Dinner session. So you've got like.